For, um, Sharon.
Hi, Joe Broden. Hi. I'm off, thanks to me too.
Remind me when the time comes.
Yes, indeed. Yeah, I'll say, I can come visit you here. Yes, indeed. I've been, I haven't been in a long while. Yeah. Okay, okay, I'll come in, I'll come in September.
You get that? I know you're busy now.
Yeah. But I'll come, I'll come. Oh. Um, Pastor. You speak on what week? Sorry. What week do you speak on in September?
Uh-uh. I probably speak every week.
Every week, every Sunday. Okay, cool. All right. Probably the second Sunday.
Okay.
Okay, cool.
Lord willing.
Okay, I got you. Thanks. All right, thanks. Got it? Yeah. You're welcome.
We're so close, but still far away. Clock in the back is not right.
Hang on.
Good evening. The Monday, August 27th, Common Council meeting is now in session. Our invocation tonight is by Pastor Lee Ross from Greater Holy Temple Church of God. Thank you, sir, for coming.
You're welcome, sir. If you will bow your heads with us and have a word of prayer. Dear wise and loving Father, first let me say thank you. Thank you for your love and for your mercy and for your kindness. Thank you on behalf of all of us who are gathered here today in this city council meeting. Thank you for your many blessings that you bestowed upon us. We thank you for our life, we thank you for our health, we thank you for our strength. Thank you for this calling to service our community. Thank you for the ability to work together to solve issues in our community and to plan for the wonderful future ahead. In the scriptures, you have said that citizens are to obey govern authorities since you have established those very authorities promote peace and order and justice. Therefore, I pray for our Mayor Pete Buttigieg, for our city council members, and for other city officials. I ask that you would graciously grant them wisdom to govern, a sense of welfare and true needs for the people of our community, a keen thirst for justice and righteousness, confidence in what is good and fitting, the ability to work together in harmony despite the adversities, personal peace in their lives and joy in their tremendous task that is set before them. I pray for the agenda that's set before them today. Please give us assurance of what would please you, O Father God, and what would benefit those who live and work in and around our city. I pray that this would be a great and productive and peaceful meeting. In Christ's name we pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. If you would, please turn your cell phones to silent. Ms. Fowler, roll call, please.
Councilmember Preston?
Here.
Councilmember McBride, Hughes. Councilmember Broden?
Here.
Councilmember Teska?
Here.
Vice President Davis?
I'm, hey, present.
Councilmember Wardy?
Here.
Councilmember Broden?
Here.
Councilmember White?
Present.
President Scott?
Present.
Eight presenters.
Thank you, Subcommittee on, report from Subcommittee on Minutes, please.
To the Common Council of the City of South Bend, the Subcommittee has respected the minutes for the August 13th, 2018, key of the council and called them to be correct. Therefore, we recommend the same be approved.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor? All opposed? Thank you. Special business. I do want to recognize David Bowling, intern for South Bend Common Council. Please stand up. Everybody, this gentleman is starting a new career on Tuesday. Intern with the Common Council did a wonderful job. Next Tuesday, sorry. Yeah, you're right. So, um, we appreciate all the work that he's done, so thank you, David. With that, we'll turn to reports from city offices. Do we have a presenter tonight? Thank you, Mayor. Mayor's speaking on city grants, updates to the Common Council. Thank you, sir.
Good evening. Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to spend just a few minutes for what I promised will be a brief presentation, but one that I think will address some questions and some interests that came from council members. South Bend has been fortunate to gather more and more intrata, uh, visitors and more and more of a reputation that we think, we hope, will continue to allow us to gain resources from partners who are interested in our story or who see some cause or project that they work on at stake in our own work here in South Bend when it comes to the revival and the trajectory of this community. Of course, there's a highly visible example of that underway right now with the presence of Habitat for Humanity with Mishawaka and South Bend participating in the Carter Work Project that's going on this week, and I know a number of people in the, in this building have been part of that and hundreds of volunteers from across the community. But also, at various points over the course of the last few months, we've mentioned in passing one or another example of philanthropic support coming to the city, so much so that I realized there was some measure of confusion about exactly which project was related to what, who it was coming from, and what we were doing with it. So, we wanted to take this opportunity to just briefly walk the council through about half dozen examples of this philanthropic support. I'll confess that there is somebody else in the administration with more expertise than I have on every one of these individual projects, but I've been very pleased to be involved in them and wanted to give you just a quick overview of some of the support that's coming to our community from outside sources, especially because there are a couple where this does in some way come before the council. For example, you will see in a couple of cases the municipal match as something that's part of a budget request if we want to get the, the full extent of the opportunity. The first is the Community Wings Grant. This comes by way of the U.S. Conference of Mayors. I had the pleasure of collecting one of those big cardboard and phone core checks at the U.S. Conference of Mayors National Meeting in Boston. That said, it was not a grant directly to the city government, it was actually a grant that was directed to the NNN with our support for the application. And the goal here is to help create a training certification support network for minority and women-owned businesses trying to get business in the community, including bidding, and competing for city work. And so, in partnership with NNN, we're now in the process of deploying that $50,000 grant to begin getting a curriculum together to help build up the capacity of those small businesses and to invite them to participate in this program. As that gets developed, you'll see more information through the NNN about how that curriculum is taking shape and how the businesses that we hope to help develop those capacities will be recruited, again, with a view over time toward them being able to compete for city business. Cities of Service is a program that is connected to Bloomberg Philanthropies, which is one of the organizations that's really gaining nationally in terms of the resources that it's bringing to bear to help cities. And so, I'm pleased that South Bend has been very much of interest to many different parts of the Bloomberg organization. This particular part of it is a program called Love Your Block, and they have committed a $25,000 grant as well as two AmeriCorps Vista volunteers for the purpose of helping with small-scale home repairs. This is something that has long been a concern in the community, especially in low-income neighborhoods. It's one reason why Rebuilding Together, formerly known as Christmas in April, is a priority for our administration. So, we're pleased to have some extra dollars and resources from the outside to put toward this work. This does entail the opportunity for a city match that would help us, we think, add to the resources in this program. It's approved, that would bring the total commitment here to $75,000. We've been working with Lincoln Way area neighborhood association, as well as the South Park, Kennedy Park, and Far Northwest side to build on this because we think this dovetails very nicely with the work that those organizations have already been doing. And we envision bringing on the Vista volunteers to help working to determine what are the areas of greatest need and who are the residents who can best benefit from these relatively small-scale repairs. For further information on both this and the Community Wings Program, Alkina Aldridge and the Department of Community Investment has the lead and will continue to develop on that. This one is bigger in scale, perhaps not in visibility. I'm not sure how much awareness there's been about this, but we've, we've mentioned it and I wanted to make sure that the council is fully aware that through Serve Indiana, South Bend has attracted a sizable six-figure subgrain that will allow us, given the city's commitment, if approved in the budget, to add our portion of the match, as many as ten full-time AmeriCorps volunteers. This really has a lot to do with weatherization. We know that low-income residents often face an outsized proportion of their income going to utility bills. And so, weatherization work, often seemingly small things like thermostats or insulation can make a big difference on their bills. Of course, it also helps benefit the sustainability goals of our community in terms of our overall carbon footprint. So, we are going to office this program out of the O'Brien Center and look forward to bringing on a program director and supporting these volunteers and beginning to work as soon as we get the approval for the funding there, with support from the South Bend Sustainability Office and Terrestra. Next, and again, a very substantial commitment in dollar terms, in partnership with the Drucker Institute, which has been interested in working with South Bend for some time, we received a major commitment from the philanthropic arm of Google and the philanthropic foundation connected to Walmart. It amounts to a half million dollars coming to South Bend, and this is really about the cradle-to-career and beyond needs of our community. So, what can we do above and beyond supporting the K-12 system here to support lifelong learning? The goal, which is an ambitious one, is actually to create a platform that can house people's educational, not just in the traditional K-12 sense, but certifications and other skills, including non-traditional skills, to help, allow them to certify and have those be recognized by employers and help encourage that kind of learning. So, we will be continuing to partner with the Drucker Institute on this and hope that we'll be able to get a platform up by 2020 that could be an example to other communities that are trying to help their residents with lifelong learning and opportunities to develop their skills and compete in the changing economy. There's also a pair of grants from Smart Growth America. First, I just want to recap some technical support that's already come our way. This is what led to the pilot projects that you see in a handful of them around different kinds of traffic design that could meet some of the needs or some of the questions from residents when it comes to having safer streets and things like traffic calming or better traffic design. Instead of spending a huge amount on engineering and then putting into the ground new ideas like roundabouts or physical traffic calming measures to first pilot them, and that's what we've been doing, again, in partnership with the Near Northwest, using these temporary traffic calming materials for demonstration projects. Right now, that's in the hands of our planning and engineering teams to try to look at which, if any, of these should be replicated in permanent sense. Smart Growth America is going to be supporting us again. We just recently were able to announce that they are offering technical assistance for small-scale manufacturing. The photo there is kind of a funny example for those of you who've had a chance to visit vested interests. There's a nonprofit called Sew Love, an extraordinary group that is really living their faith by helping women develop skills in sewing, not only what you would call, I guess, for lack of a better term, recreational sewing, but actually what they call industrial sewing, something that there's a lot of demand for. And it's a good example of the kind of non-university-related skills development that we think will help people be qualified for jobs that are actually growing. So, that's kind of an example of what we mean when we say small-scale manufacturing. And we will be getting a site visit free of charge to the community and the input of some experts in this field who will spend a four-month technical assistance period, including that site visit, working with us to help us support local business owners and community partners. And we hope to come out of this with an action plan on how we can continue to develop small-scale manufacturing in the community. And then, last but not least, one that we're really excited about. Earlier this year, we received $100,000 from Bloomberg Philanthropies, and the problem we're trying to solve with this grant has to do with the difficulty that many low-income people have getting to work. If your pattern of getting to work is perhaps not supported by the existing schedule or route map or frequency of our transit system, we don't want people just falling through the cracks. And so, we have been establishing this pilot program for ride-share credits that subsidize people's ability to get to work. What we found is very promising initial results in terms of reduced absenteeism, improved job stability, less turnover, and so, this is actually benefiting not just the employees but the employers. We've been our own guinea pig in this. Some of the folks in the Benny's Parks and Arts team who are on the lower end of the pay scale have been eligible for this. But we've also partnered with Beacon, the University of Notre Dame, and Senior One Care, again, specific to the lower-wage segment of their workforce, to help engage them on piloting this approach. The view is that really the employer would carry a big part of the load and that it would come back to the employer through the savings from reduced turnover, as well as obviously making members of our community better off. We think that this is very promising, and so, we are going to take this back to Bloomberg as part of a handful of cities. This started out with 300 cities competing for a pilot. About 30 got that opportunity. That's where the $100,000 came from. We will now be competing with those other 30 for a shot at a million dollars, perhaps even $5 million. There, I believe, five grants to be given, four at the $1 million level, one at the $5 million level. Based on the question of whether what we have discovered here and what we've piloted here might make a difference not only here in the community but actually as a model for other cities with similar situations for their low-wage workers having difficulties getting to work. So, we've put in our application and we will be waiting for news in October, and of course, you'll hear right away from us if we get good news on that front. So, again, I promised to be brief, but those are, I just wanted to kind of break those out because we hear about this grant or that piece of support. Obviously, I'm only speaking about philanthropic grants. You'll also see in the course of budget presentations, a great number of grants that we rely on through the federal government and through state partners, from the Burn Jack Program for police to the safer grants that our fire department uses, or, of course, the Community Development Block Grant, which is a big part of the lifeblood of DCI. And certainly, if there are any questions about that, happy to take those back and try to send you any information if it's not already visible or obvious from information that's being provided from as part of the budget process. So, thank you for the opportunity to run through this.
Thanks. Can we take a couple of questions, Mayor? We'll start at the left with Ms. White.
I just would like to add, thank you for your presentation. We do have some additional information, and this is the City of South Bend, the grant revenue summary, and I've been working with Jennifer in terms of trying to put together information where we can see the number of grants that are coming in, who they're serving, the amount, and we probably will spend some additional time during the budget process to really go through this.
Excellent.
But I thought this was a great beginning for the council, but also puts us in a position to respond to our various constituents as well.
Good, thank you.
No, thanks for the presentation. Thank you.
Yeah, it's all encouraging. Keep up the good work. Thank you.
Always encouraging. What do you think is our huge market when we compete against these other cities? What do you think is some of the issues now since that we've already submitted? What do you think stands out for us in our packet that we have that maybe another city doesn't have? What's our, what's our?
I think we have two things at once that are what makes us interesting to this philanthropic world. One is that we have this remarkable trajectory, a city that's growing again after being in the situation that we were in, a city that's known for innovation, that's been able to work really nimbly and solve problems in a very ambitious way. And on the other hand, the fact that we remain a low-income city, that we face tremendous challenges in making sure that our trajectory of economic growth is inclusive. I think many people are surprised to learn that to this day, our per capita personal income in this city is below $20,000. And so, when a philanthropic organization is saying, okay, how can we make the biggest difference in people's lives and especially supporting people who are left out of this economy? And at the same time, a city and a community that seems strong enough to innovate and responsibly use those resources, I think we fit into that, that meeting both of those criteria, and my sense is that that's why we've attracted so much attention and interest.
How can other neighborhood associations, even on the south side, get involved with some of these kind of activities? So, that, you know, I know a lot of us in NNN, they're just, they're just an active group, I mean, yeah.
They're go-getters.
I know. And so, but what other things can, so we can spearhead that? And the last thing is, I know that transpo, what's the role with that?
The track, what is the one that attracts you? Transpo, yeah. So, take the second question first. I think, we really think of this as a supplement, so either a last-mile supplement when we're just beyond the reach of the existing network, or when we have people who are outside of the range, maybe in terms of time of day or in terms of frequency that we can serve with transpo. I think in the end, you can't, you can't succeed in getting low-income people or any people to work if you don't have a healthy transit system. We also know, just in the reality we're in, is that we need to find other tools as well. So, we hope that it continues to be regarded as a both-hand. In terms of neighborhood groups, we certainly rely on vibrant neighborhood groups to help get the job done. In fact, candidly, some great-grant opportunities, we don't find them. The neighborhood groups come to us and they see, can you do a letter of support or can you help us do this? And we certainly welcome, I think the best way to engage a neighborhood group that perhaps has not yet had the experience of working on one of these is to invite them to present their two or three biggest issues or problems they're trying to solve, to discuss those with our, our neighborhood and planning team, and then we can work together to see if there's any philanthropic interest out there in something that might help speak to that particular challenge or problem.
Cool.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jake? Yeah, just thank you, Mayor, for, for the information. I think beyond the philanthropic piece, which is fantastic, I think this broader piece on the grant funding within the city budget is going to be very helpful as we wade through this. Obviously, the city's got a lot of different funding sources and sometimes it's difficult to keep it straight, so thank you, thank you for the information.
Thanks, and we know that's a bit of an eye chart, so anything we can do to help sort of walk.
Yeah, electronically. Yeah.
Ms. Broden?
Yes, thanks for your presentation. You identify, I caught three of the four groups that were involved in the pilot, VPA, Beacon, and Senior One Care. What was the fourth, please?
That would be the University of Notre Dame.
Oh, that's right. How could I forget? And then, in terms of the on-demand transportation, what is the modality? What are, what are people jumping on and in or?
So, right now, it's a partnership with Uber. It's based on that kind of ride share, but certainly could be built out in a way that it would be neutral to any competitors that are in the same space.
And then, so Lime Bikes could be a possibility as well?
I suppose this is really about focused on vehicular transportation, but yeah, if the model works, I suppose you could also see it work in terms of Lime Bike credits.
Okay. And then, I think maybe particularly challenged is, is some of the manufacturing jobs across county. So, this is, I think, very exciting, you know, to look at if it works here. You know, it'd be great to scale it out.
Yeah, we have high hopes for it. You've got to think there are a lot of other cities of low to medium density that would be in the same level.
Yeah. And then, three of these are, or two of the three are in healthcare, which is, that's a great sector as well, so I'm very excited about that. I overall love the reports. It's great information, so thanks so much.
Thank you.
Ms. Broden?
I just want to thank you. I think it's wonderful and exciting to see how you're engaging neighborhoods, particularly some of those neighborhoods who have felt before, you know, years and years past, really left out, and you've done a great job, you and your administrative team, in engaging and responding to their interests, namely La South Park, Kennedy Park, the Lana area, La South area, and Far Northwest. So, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Mayor, just a couple of comments. You mentioned a couple of things that make us write to, for receiving grants to Vice President Davis' comment. I want to follow up on that. I think the other thing is people, not only in South Bend, but also the staff that you guys have gathered. There's a lot of people in South Bend that are like, yeah, let's try something different. Case in point, the small, little circular roundabout on Hudson and Riverside. What a great exercise to try that first, and we've seen some other speed reduction-ish, you know, projects that didn't quite work. But the good thing is to try it before we start putting things in place in concrete and asphalt and all that. So, not only people, but the other thing is, you know, my background in capital equipment manufacturing, our size city is a right, excellent-sized city for testing. You know, we're good for that. We're, you know, someone's not going to roll something out to Los Angeles, you know, that they would try here. So, whenever we can take advantage of that and be that little guinea pig for different things, I, it's great. We can really benefit from that. And the nice thing about South Bend is, from a business standpoint, it usually hits the model, the cost model, to whatever they're going to try and the size to actually make a difference and see impact where they could scale it up or scale it down for other cities. That's pretty neat. You know, talk about traffic circles. Also, one thing that I love about all these grants, I think it's really neat, and I hope, you know, I see it within your administration, you keep pushing for more of this, and even yourself going out and selling South Bend is, you know, for every time we get a grant, it can alleviate something off the budget. So, that's pretty obvious, but it's good to find that so-called free money. So, thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, President.
Okay. We will move on. With that, we have nothing for Committee of the Whole?
Motion not to move into the Committee of the Whole.
We have no third readings on bills, so we'll move to resolutions. Ms. Fowler, would you please give a reading to, third reading, or read the resolution at 1838, please?
1838. A resolution confirms confirming the adoption of a declaratory resolution dedicating certain areas within the City of South Bend, Indiana, commonly known as Lot 12, U.S. 31 Industrial Park Phase 2 as an economic revitalization area for purposes of a four-year rural property tax abatement for rural, healthy.
Thank you. Is there a presenter?
Name and address. Dan Buckenmeyer, Director of Business Development, Department of Community Investment, 14th floor of this building. We're here to ask council for an approval on a confirming resolution for a company called Shambo and Son, specialty custom contracting, construction, and engineering. Nearly $2 million in private investment going in, and this is again at the corner where Cleveland Brick Dillon Drive come together. 13,000 square foot facility, about half office, half warehouse. They are consolidating two out-of-town businesses and locating them in the City of South Bend, relocating 86 jobs from Mishawaka to South Bend, and more importantly, creating 25 new permanent full-time jobs in a salary range ranging from $35,000 to $110,000 a year over the next three years. It's a four-year phase-in abatement, so by the fifth year, they will be paying full boat on the property. The, Mr. Doolittle is here representing the petitioner, so allow him to speak.
Petitioner, come forward. Just give me a brief statement of what your project's about, and we'll, we'll move on.
13,500 square foot.
You name an address, sir.
Pardon me?
Name an address first, sir.
Richard Doolittle, 4100 Edison Lakes Parkway, Mishawaka, Indiana.
Thank you.
It's a 13,500 square foot new construction, 50% office, 50% warehouse for a company that's a national company by the name of Shambo, which is currently located in Mishawaka. They have a subsidiary in South Bend and a few satellite operations over northern Indiana, and they intend to locate in this building on Carbon Mill Drive. Any other, I mean, pointed questions I might answer?
Thank you. Council, any questions?
I just have one.
Sir? Vice President Davis?
Not for you.
Okay. Dan?
Dan?
Yes, sir.
Could you share with us the most, I'm good.
Could you share with us the most, I'm good. When it comes down to abatements, I know there's been a lot of pressure that we've been faced to deal with them. Can you tell us the most immediate impact that this will have when we will see the greater returns? Could you share that with the public?
Well, we see the return on investment is just a, frankly, just a delayed return on investment. It allows us to give something back to a company that's bringing jobs and investment to the city. Some of our largest taxpayers right now are companies that we gave abatements to and gave some assistance to in the years past to move to South Bend. We see this as one of our critical tools in bringing companies like this into the city and bringing, again, in this case, 25 new jobs to the city and a couple million dollars in investment. So.
Is that answered your question, Mr.?
In a general way, but again, and maybe even for future, the fastest time that we're going to see this hit, so the average person who says we're giving off all of these tax abatements and they don't see us any return coming from five, 10 years in a row, those kind of things, is what would be your argument that they would be able to better understand?
You're asking for the specific ROI, the specific year we break even on the investment. I don't have that in front of me. I apologize. I can certainly communicate that back to you.
Just for future, you know, I would just say that in the presentation, because we are being asked about that a lot more. I know some of that's been sent to us before in some presentations, but just for the general in terms of when people are documenting, say, this is going to come back in 2026, 2027, whatever, and then it's going to, from that point, we'll make, catch up from that, just in the presentation, from that.
Certainly. The tech, full tax abated is going to be about just over 100,000. And when, this is estimates, again, this is up to the assessor. But then, we had estimated, again, the full tax amount that they'll be paying after five years, that's at 144,000 a year. So, again.
So that's all, just money to note that for the record.
Certainly, yes, sir.
I understood. Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, we'll open up the public. Anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor of 1838, please come to the podium. Seeing none, anyone speaking against 1838, please come to the podium. Back to counsel. Move for the adoption of 1838. Call them fit, or, I'm sorry. Roll call. Creama Fowler, please.
Councilmember Preston?
Aye.
Councilmember Broden?
Aye.
Councilmember Teschman?
Aye.
Vice President Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Boardy?
Aye.
Councilmember Furley?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
President Scott?
Aye.
Thank you. 1840, please.
1840. A resolution of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana approving a petition of the Area Board of Zoning Appeals for property located at 213 and 217 South Main Street.
Thank you. Is there a committee report?
Yes, Mr. President. The Neighborhood Innovation Committee met this afternoon and bring this report to you with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, sir. Uh, so, President?
Good evening. Angela Smith from the Area Plan Commission with offices located in 11th floor of this building. Before you, it's a petition for a special exception used to allow a drive-through within the central business district of South Bend. The property in question here is made of two vacant lots with a parking lot of sandwich between them two that you see here at the corner of Main and Jefferson. The proposal is for an office building that would include a, one of their tenants on the ground floor being a coffee shop that would like to utilize a drive-through pharmacy. Repose ground traffic is to come in off of Main Street and then order at the order window on the west side of the building and then exit out back onto Main Street. It's the preferred traffic flow. This comes to you from the area for zoning appeals with a favorable recommendation. There was nobody to speak in either opposition or to the public. I do have to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from counsel? No. Seeing none. Will the petitioner come forth and give us a brief update?
Good evening. I'm Brian McMorrow with Abbot Marsh Consultants, 750 Lincoln Way East, on behalf of the South Bend's Department of Redevelopment. And I'm joined by Jeff Smoak, who will introduce himself shortly. To really tell another chapter of the story of South Bend, that in this case is not bringing funding, but business investment downtown. The building is, as you see here, and unlike the federal courthouse across the street, which has lots of concrete and very little glass, which will be a lot of glass in this building, the ground floor space is going to be commercial space that is going to add, we think, a lot of energy to these streets, West Jefferson and South Main Street, that it fronts. We have either complied with the zoning ordinance in its entirety or have from the VZA a handful of variances. The one thing we ask for your support on this evening is a special exception to allow that drive-through use for a ground floor coffee shop.
Thank you. Mr. Smoke, any comments?
Jeff Smoak, 112 West Jefferson. Brian gave a great intro. You guys are familiar with this project, and we're looking forward to breaking ground in the first quarter and bringing new energy and excitement and investment to downtown South Bend.
Thanks. Any questions?
Could you just share what you shared this afternoon, about your possible projections of when you think we will be able to determine who the, then, the person would be, what kind of timeframe you're looking at, those kind of announcements?
Oh, sure. Ideally, you know, we'd love to have that all ironed out in the next few months. Right now, we're talking to a few different tenants for both the retail spaces and the office space. So in the next couple of months, we should have more certainty in who they are.
And the uniqueness of this whole thing versus all the others kind of coffee shops around it, could you share a little more of that, too?
You know, I just think the building is going to be first-class and it's the first new office investment downtown, I think, in over 20 years. So there's going to be a lot of excitement. And I think from the coffee shop perspective, we are asking for the drive-through, but it's going to be more of a walkable destination. It's going to kind of link up the north part of downtown and the south part of downtown towards the ballpark. So I think it's going to be kind of a hub for a lot of activity and informal business meetings and things like that.
They will serve hot chocolate, marshmallows, and that kind of stuff, too, right?
No, of course, they're only dry, yes.
You're trying to influence Vice President Davis. Regina?
So, just for clarity, there is a coffee shop there, but it's the bottom, this is going to be office space and retail. So the whole bottom floor, is that all retail?
Correct, yes. The bottom floor would be 100% retail. The south suite, there's two, it's going to be two different retail users. So the south suite would be the coffee shop or the drive-through.
Question? Flexible space, though, so if the coffee shop does not go, it could be used for other retail purposes?
Absolutely. Could be just regular retail, things like that. I mean, it could be multiple uses.
Okay. And then just procedurally, as counsel, we just received the staff report, no site plans at all. So that might help in the future to include that in our packet. And I don't know who that's directed to, but at least I, that's all I received in mind. Yeah, just the face, you know, the cover letter, and then the memorandum from the air plant staff. But that's why earlier, familiarizing, you know, with ourselves with actually what your site plan was and where people were going in and out. So just might abbreviate our questions, get that in advance.
That, that would come from DCI, so, you guys know, area plan. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, we'll open up to...
Good luck and thank you.
Comments or worries? I, I just want to, for the record, during committee, just mentioned I was concerned about traffic flow bottlenecking from the drive-through, but appreciate you guys talking through that. So I'm fine with all that. So with that, we'll open up to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of 1840, please come to the podium. Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak against 1840, please come to the podium. Again, seeing none, we'll turn it back to counsel.
Let's do that.
Second, Ms. Fowler?
Councilmember Broden?
Aye.
Councilmember Teschman?
Aye.
Vice President Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Boardy?
Aye.
Councilmember Furley?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Preston?
Aye.
President Scott?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Good luck. All right. Ms. Fowler, let's start with two first readings. Would you please read 3818, please?
Excuse me, President Scott, I'm just going to give the summary of why we're dealing with these bills.
Do you want me to do that, or you want to do that?
Oh, no. The attorney, you can do that.
Okay. Mr. Fowler, if you could move, I mean, Mr. Palmer, if you could move the microphone a little closer. For the record, from the Personnel and Finance Committee chair, we just want to state, the next four bills, the reason for the motions, the first readings that we're doing, Bob Palmer, our attorney, will, will brief you guys on that, the next actions that we're going to take.
These first readings are simply to set the stage for the passage of the, of the budget in October. The first readings are simply that, we will have a public hearing on each of these ordinance on September 24th, and then there will be another two-week hearing until October 8th, until we actually come up to prefer reading and, and passage. But the public hearing on each of these bills will be on September 24th, and after that public hearing, the final process, the final reading will be council-owned.
Thank you. Is there any questions? Seeing none. Okay, we'll continue with first readings. Ms. Fowler, would you please give first reading to 3818?
3818. First meeting on the ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, levying taxes and fixing the rate of taxation for the purpose of raising revenue to meet the necessary expenses for the civil city of South Bend for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2019.
Thank you. I move this be set for a second reading on 9/24, set to the Personnel and Finance Committee, and then subsequently set for a third reading on 10/8, in the council portion only.
Second.
All in favor? All right. All opposed? Thank you. 3918, please.
3918. First meeting on the ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, appropriating money for the purpose of defraying the expenses of several departments of the civil city of South Bend, Indiana, for the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2019, and ending December 31st, 2019, including all outstanding claims and obligations and fixing daytime on the same certificate.
This, like the two that follow, will be set for a second reading and public hearing on September 24th, referred to the Personnel and Finance Committee, and then a final hearing in council portion only on 10/8.
Second.
All in favor? All opposed? Thank you. Ms. Fowler, 4018, please.
4018. First meeting on the ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, appropriating money for the purpose of defraying the expenses of the designated enterprise funds of the city of South Bend, Indiana, for the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2019, and ending December 31st, 2019, including all outstanding claims and obligations and fixing daytime that the same certificate.
Referred to the Personnel and Finance Committee, set for second reading and public hearing on 9/24, and final action on 10/8, in the council portion only.
Second.
All in favor? All opposed? Thank you. 4118.
4118. First meeting on the ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, appropriating, adopting, and approving the South Bend Public Transportation Corporation's 2019 budget and levying the tax and fixing the rate of taxation for the purpose of raising revenue to fund the South Bend Public Transportation Corporation, South Bend, Indiana, for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2019.
Set for second reading and public hearing on 9/24.
Third reading.
Third reading on 9/24 as well, and referred to the Personnel and Finance Committee.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. With that, we're done with first readings. Move to unfinished business. Any unfinished business at this time?
Mr. Vice President Davis?
Just, didn't know if our utilities and public health persons have been able to, oh, when would they be able to send out an email for our second update, a second meeting? Do you know regarding what we've had this past week? For the, all the sewage and rain? Y'all gonna send out an email?
Yeah, we're going to. All right.
Okay, cool. Same, same thing with the, I know we said with the transit summit, was it possible with everybody coming in here?
Oh, yes. I will do that.
The transit we were talking about when we...
Transit summit.
You see, it's done like, different people can come and put everything in.
I will get any answer to you guys this week.
Okay.
Okay?
I appreciate it.
No problem. Anything else under, unfinished? Ms. White?
Okay. Our next budget meeting will be this coming Wednesday at 5:00, and the department that will be giving their budget presentation will be the South Bend Police Department.
Okay, thank you.
And again, we encourage the public to come and participate.
Anything else?
Are there any changes in that schedule overall for the hearings going forward?
Yes, changes will be forthcoming. The city clerk and myself will be meeting with our, with Jennifer to really look at the schedule and to ensure that the topics that will be forthcoming, that we will have ample time. So our goal is to have that approved by this Wednesday.
Okay, so.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Nothing.
Thank you. Any new business?
I have a question. Is there any way that we could send flowers or condolences to McCain, from our city? I know he's not our state member, but just thought about it.
We can take that into consideration.
I appreciate it.
I have three items.
You have three items? Ms. Broden?
So, as a rep for MACOG, just to bring to everyone's attention, I know a press release went out today, but the Michiana on the Move Transportation Plan is being looked at. That's a long-range transportation plan for our region. There's a survey under MOV2045.macog.com, and that is open for comments until September 16th. And just a reminder that our long-range transportation plan is a blueprint for how federal, state, local funds are invested, highways, public transportation, freight, and even active transportation, such as biking and walking routes, et cetera. So members of the public, council members, elected officials are encouraged to participate and input on that survey. And then, second item, if I might, a little smaller scale, the North Shore Triangle Neighborhood is doing a visioning session on September 13th. Members of that neighborhood are invited at 6:30 to attend, and council members are welcome to participate in that as well, and that'll be at the Neighborhood Resources Connection Center. Last item, if I might, is yesterday, Women's Equity Day, 12 women locally were honored. And one of the, one of the 12 honorees was none other than Regina Williams-Preston. And I'd also like to give a shout-out, if I might, because of their impact on our city. And often, they give invaluable input to us as council members, both at the local level and the at-large members. But the other 2018 honorees, Nancy Flores, Diana Hess, Penny Hughes, Judge Jean Jordan, Jan Joseph, Julie Nava, Kathy Schuth, Blair Topich Caldwell, Maritza Robles, posthumously, and then Albertine Wasenhove, and then Linda Wilson. So that's part of the celebrating Michiana Women's Leaders Exhibit, which is on display at the IU SB Civil Rights Heritage Center, with the main partners in that project, the Michiana Women's Leaders Project, the League of Women Voters, and, and of course, IU SB, plus other local sponsors. So congratulations.
Excellent comment, Ms. Broden. I was there, I know Ms. White was there, I know Creama Fowler was there, Joe Broden was there. Very good ceremony, and very important for us to recognize. So thank you for making those comments. Vice President Davis?
I know Councilwoman McBride is not here, but we had a good turnout at the meeting in her district, so there were several of us that were there. in her district, so there were several of us that were there, and I will wait on her, but I got to see what, we all have made some promises that we wanted to do afterwards, but I needed to touch base with her, so I will touch base with her, and then you'll probably see an email on the big blue floor from there.
Councilmember Tesco?
I just got one real quick, I know I've at least got one-fifth district resident here, and of course, Mr. Perry. I've got a meet your new councilman event coming up on the 6th, this is the second in a series. For all the folks in the fifth district who may not know that there's been a change, and may not have met me, so we're going to be out at the Miami branch library, Miami and Kerr.
What time?
From 4:30 to 6:30.
What date?
On the 6th, September 6th.
Ah, it's like a world tour.
World tour.
Nice. Glad you're doing those, so, awesome, so we'll support you in any way we can. All right, anything else on our new business? All right, we'll move on to privilege of the floor. Privilege of the floor is where individuals wish to address the council, will state their name and residential address, individuals are limited to three minutes only, maximum time period for this portion is 30 minutes. Individuals may address only issues over which see as jurisdiction. Individuals should not be permitted to address topics which the council has heard previously on this agenda, like Mr. Bowling moving on to a new job. The council president may assign topics raised to individuals, privilege of the floor to appropriate council members, committees, clerk, or city administration. With that, we have two veterans of privilege of the floor at the podium. Go ahead, step up, state your name and address, if you would, either before or after, put your name and address on the clipboard at hand. So, Mr. Goodchild, you have three minutes, Gavin Furlik will time you and give you a 30-second warning.
It's all smiles, you probably saw me shaking the mayor's hand, you probably already read the letter from the mayor.
Thank you.
I met with the mayor, and Saul said we were coming out there.
Mr. Goodchild? I'm sorry, I need your name and address.
Oh, name, brand, and serial.
Exactly.
Goodchild, South Bend, 837 South 24th Street, South Bend, Indiana, 46615.
Thank you.
Okay, but I did meet and thank him, gave him a nice card, showed him I was planting a tree, sustainability. That is so important, you see all 14 trees, I continue to mention that to everyone, the people came from Los Angeles, they saw this, they're trying their best to think that they could bring something like that to their school system. You have it here, you have 14 unbelievable tree carvings, they can get maybe one or two, there's nothing like it in the Midwest, you can double your catchment area, and all I'm talking about is dollars and cents. The zoo brings in people from 20-mile radius out in Michigan, those people from Michigan, the superintendent of the schools that came here with the rest of the delegation from LA, and you say, how do you know these people? I'm a two-time Olympic athlete, I got friends all over, they cannot believe, they took hundreds of pictures to take at home. You get 20 miles, you get 40 miles, double your catchment area by just introducing this, by just promoting it from the zoo, telling them, not only come here for the zoo in the morning, go to lunch and run along his kingdom. You have a program interactive here, people all over the area saying, my God, it's a gift, it's generous, it's my father's, and I said enough, we can coordinate it with the zoo people, I think would be, second one, we have the tree that's there, you have all the texts and messages that went out, you have all of them in your papers that went out in 2014 from the city employees, you have all of them from the zoo people saying what we're doing, my sister worked 20 years, it went out from Phil Sinclair, he said, people, it's going to be there, she's a dedicated employee, get a life, it's done. It was approved, it was up there, and it was controversial, it's all you know, nobody has to ask anymore, but it's there, it's in front, you all know, you asked me about the new program, where it's going to go, I said, we can move it, I'll pay for it, we find a location, I think would be excellent.
30 seconds.
With where the other children are by the splash pad area there, it'd be fantastic. So, that's something we all have to talk about, because the project is ongoing and it's going to be impacted, what are we going to do with that? The last thing, my sister pegged 25 years with the food services program, she was a dedicated employee, she ran the summer parks program over 50 sites, and she can't be any more delighted than to see that picture and come about with my sister Suzie with that.
Sir, your time is up.
You know, the bear in front of the zoo, be placed somewhere appropriate at the park.
Thank you, Rob.
And Cochise, by the way, in the definition, is great store employee.
Who?
That's my father's unit.
Thank you, Rob.
It has been approved, by the way, for my...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next name and address.
Jesse Davis, P Box 10205, South Bend, Indiana. I think when I talked to you guys a while back about the monopolizing, I guess for lack of better words, of the towing companies in South Bend, I mentioned an incident where a young lady's car was marked on the side of the road, hit by a drunk driver and towed, she got a bill for $1,400 to tow that car from Calverden Lear to Calvert-Nallup Street, where the tow yard is. We went over the same thing with the sewer insurance program for many years, I fought and court over that one. Today, I get calls from numerous people, one person in particular had a Corvette towed out of Eddie Street Commons area last Saturday night, I believe. So, I guess my first question is, how the hell does somebody get a no parking sign to encompass an entire block where there's two houses, and it's a public road paid for by the public, that have garages and driveways that can house four to six vehicles on their property, but yet there's no parking signs? I'm pretty sure that y'all don't want to put no parking in front of everybody's house on every neighborhood. Don't know how long those signs have been there, but now that we've made no parking in Eddie Street Commons on most of the streets, our tow companies are getting wealthy, or I should say, our tow companies, since it was monopolized, towed over 100 cars out of there this weekend, at $180 apiece, that put $18,000 in that tow company's pocket, and another $1,000 from your citizens into the police department's pockets for their $10 fee. Ridiculous, utterly ridiculous for you to tell public citizens that we can't park on a street. If you want to put no parking during Notre Dame games, that's one thing, but to say no parking at all on a street is ridiculous. If those signs don't get changed, and y'all don't do something, because I'm sure it came to the council. The tow company said, look, we don't care if we damaged a car, we can't be sued, the city contracted us, you got to sue the city, the city's protected and can't be sued, we already know the city can't be sued, there's no question about that. But for the tow company to tell a person whose car was damaged, afford that, mind you, to the tune of thousands of dollars, you got to sue the city, you can't sue us.
You have 30 seconds.
Is ridiculous. And to say that the city told the tow company to yank these cars out of there any way they have to, if they got to yank them over curbs or whatever, just yank them out of there, that's what this tow company said today. I recorded it, you know me, so you need to look into that parking situation. Eddie Street Commons can have all the fights and police protection they want, you can't stop citizens from parking on public streets, I paid for that street, I'll be parked there tonight, I hope the police come and try to tow my car along.
Your time is up. Thank you, sir. Next name and address.
Richard Coll, 55478 Moss Road. I don't know if I'm fully supposed to be up here yet, Mr. Davis, but I want to talk about this Grandview situation.
I know.
Just outside of the Ardmore neighborhood, we have a railroad crossing at Grandview. This railroad crossing is probably the worst railroad crossing I've ever seen. I already have information with Mr. D. up there, I call him Mr. D., Mr. D. up there, and I would like to have something put in the budget to fix this, that our children crossing over, back and forth over to go to the west side or to tumble over to our side. This is not only Ardmore that has come to me about this, this is the neighboring area that have children going to Washington High School. We've had three suicide signs at this crossing now. We need this repaired. Just go drive it, go look at it. If you can get out of the pit and get back up on the railroad, God bless you. It needs to be repaired, it needs lights, all the kids, lights. This is not for me. This is for the city of South Bend and those people that work, play, and travel in that area. Thank you, people.
Thank you. But thank you. Anyone else? Seen on, entertaining motion to adjourn?
Someone, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll take your nickel now.